All right, it's November 21st, 2023, 7:30 PM. I call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members President and myself, Bob Shavitt, Nandi Marco, Doug Roberts, and we're going to seat Michael Johansson for Joseph Hall tonight. There we have a public hearing tonight, PZ-23-14, Regulation Amendment to Section 3 and Section 11.01 of the zoning regulations pertaining to family childcare homes and group childcare homes as required by PA 23-142.
So we've talked about this. There is a public act which says that you can't make a family childcare home or group childcare home, which is basically zero to six children or six to 12 children that's being operated within a dwelling. Go through approvals beyond what you would for a single-family home. I don't know the complete background as to how we got here. I had heard that it is somewhat based upon the sort of a lack of accessible childcare. That kind of happened during COVID, but I don't know that to be exactly the case. But the way that our regulations were set up, there were some modifications that we did need to make, starting with the first page in Section 3. I'm proposing to add the word "primary" to the definition which already exists for daycare center. And so that's for more than 12, so it's not what we're reviewing now. But I wanted to clarify because the in-home daycares, for lack of a better word, are accessory to. The primary use is still at the home. So I wanted to clarify that daycare center was a primary use. And then you'll see on the next page, I've added an accessory use to, again, create a better distinction. And then kind of the easiest way, based upon the organization of our regulations and how we have it set up, without creating pages of text to address that, was for, at least that I can see, was to create a carve-out within Section 11, which is how we deal with home occupations, which already states the existing criteria that a home occupation would need to make or need to meet. So I'm essentially adding a caveat here that if they comply with the standards of the Office of Early Childhood, which is what the state act says, then they don't need to demonstrate some of these other things. So like, we don't dictate outside storage for a single-family home, for example. We don't say you can only have 25% of the structure associated with a single-family home. So those criteria, basically, would not apply. If they demonstrate they have a license with the Office of Early Childhood. So that, to me, was the clearest and most concise way to address that. The up to six are already and for many years have not been regulated. So if you have an in-home childcare business now, you likely don't have approvals and you're likely operating internally. And that has always been something that has been an obligation on our end from the state level, which started in the fire marshals. So this act is what is... This act now requires that town certify and say yes to the Secretary of the OPM. We are in compliance. But this doesn't really change functionally how these uses have been regulated for the better part of 10 years.
We're simply changing our zoning to reflect the new statute.
Right, yep. So essentially, if you are taking care of up to 12 children in your home and you are licensed by the state, then you get a zoning permit from us, just like a shed or a deck. And as long as you maintain the state licenses, you don't need anything.
So the definitions have to change in those two sections.
Yeah, our definitions actually weren't bad because of the way that they were separated. So you can thank Mark Brants lengthy, but... Yeah, so that's why on the first page you'll see more than 12. And the way the regs are set up, that is like a daycare center. That's a place where people go during the day, but they don't decide.
Right.
So just trying to put some separation into those uses.
All right, any questions or comments?
Is there a good way to move forward?
I agree.
How many television repairmen are there anymore?
There aren't. From away now. Remember that when we were kids?
Oh, yeah.
We had to pass through the whole shebang.
Oh, yeah, yeah. There's a guy at the time who come up to stop at the house from the step on the big back there and, you know, whizzing and jiggling and get the thing back working and again.
You usually lose the vertical or horizontal role.
Yeah.
The whole.
We had a 20 and Sony, I think, back in 19... Then two or three. They used to be 300 hours.
Good, and... Yeah, good for the public. All right. Seeing as we don't have any public here in person tonight, I open it up to anyone online that has something going, Kathy DeMers.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just have a question on the regulation change. Would there be a way that we could consider...
Can you state your address for the record and so forth?
Yep, sorry. Kathy DeMers, 48 Mason Road. Regarding the regulation changes, under the definitions, I'm just wondering if the definitions that we have currently could be changed to reflect the new definitions that the state is using. For example, instead of group daycare home, the state is now using the term group childcare home. And also, instead of family daycare homes, which is how, what we have under our definitions, that it be changed to family childcare homes. And that would be consistent with what was going to be added to Section 11.01.01.06 at the end of the handout that you have in red.
Yeah. Because there's a... Yeah, okay. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to do that. It should not be a problem.
Okay. Anything else, Kathy?
No, that was really... Well, one quick question. And I know you're not, this isn't specifically about the childcare centers, but do we have any definitions for adult day centers? Because it's under the definition for daycare center. It allows for a program of supplementary care for compensation to more than 12 related or unrelated children or any number of adults outside their own homes on a regular basis for a part of the 24 hours. Just wondering if, while things are being changed, if we want to have a specific definition for adult day center. I believe that Mansfield, at the regulations that they had sent over for your review, because they're in a budding town, they changed their definitions as part of their new regulations for this childcare public act. And they have a definition for adult daycare in there that we do not.
We don't call it out separately anywhere in the regs, except for community residences for mentally ill adults and the associated requirements from that. So we could certainly adopt the definition for adult. But it would have to be separate from this because it would be a new amendment. So we couldn't include it as part of that. But we could just prepare one separately if you wanted to.
We can do it.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
We're all getting older. We might have more adult day center needs in the future.
Yeah, I hope and I never wind up in one.
What's your address again?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other comments from the public? Doesn't look like it. Okay.
He's the assistant manager.
Yeah, I know. Did she... I see her hand up.
Oh, no, that's my cursor. Sorry.
No, you see the yellow hand.
Yeah, I just glanced over. I saw the hand.
I don't think anyone else wants to... Wants to comment. Okay. Make a motion then do a closed public hearing, PZ-23-14.
I'm seconded.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the company is closed. That brings us to new business. PZ-23-14 Regulation Amendments to Section 3 and Section 11.01 of the zoning regulations pertaining to family childcare homes and group childcare homes as required by PA 23-142. Or we can act on this tonight. I'm sure it will. Someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept PZ-23-14 Regulation Amendments to Section 3 and Section 11.01 of the zoning regulations pertaining to family childcare homes and group childcare homes as required by PA 23-142.
Do we want to make a comment about the change in the... When the text changes to...
The titles of the definitions.
Yeah, with titles of the station. Imagine state. Okay. Have a second?
I seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And we can just note the effective date for that based upon publication. We can set the effective date and probably looking at the calendar for December 15th. We have to certify to the state for December 1st, so we're in compliance. But the actual effective date of the reg will be 12/15. We'll note that in the...
Okay, which brings us to commission bylaws.
We started this quite a while ago. We reviewed it at a couple of meetings and then I sent it off to Haller and Sage for comment. This sort of was born from, you know, this commission was obviously the subject of a significantly public process and we had a lot of questions. I think people that don't understand how this commission works. We've modified the agenda to show what we do at each step. We've tried to clarify and make sure that everybody is aware of what happens and how things function. But also, absent bylaws in the ways that this group deviates from what would normally happen, we want to codify that here so that it's clear. So for example, we don't do election of officers every year. We do it typically or have been doing it to follow like the general election every two years. Every other board, it's annually, January 1st, they have an organizational meeting. So this kind of qualifies that. It also memorializes the process, you know, what's on the agenda, the order of business. It doesn't create new... Doesn't create any new processes. It doesn't create any new obligations. There's no responsibilities that have been placed on the commissioner or any individual person that didn't already exist. It's just a set of guidelines to sort of set some foundation in place. So there was a one typo in here where it referenced the incorrect number of commissioners. And then there was also some language. And I pulled up some existing bylaw language from, that was old, that just clarifies that an alternate cannot participate in deliberation unless seated. So they can participate in questioning the applicant. They can participate in everything as part of the public hearing and everything as far as questions and comments, et cetera. But once the commission starts deliberating, they can't participate unless they're seated. It references the section of the Connecticut general statutes that authorizes the commission to hold executive sessions when we file a meeting calendar. Really, nothing beyond what statute and FOI would require. That major one would be under elections and index. Yeah, 3.5. During the first regular meeting following each biennial election, the commission shall hold an organizational meeting for the purposes of reviewing the adopted bylaws and elect officers. So there's no timetable associated with this, but this reflects the comments from Haller and Sage. So I wanted to bring it back around. We have those edits, which you did look at.
Yeah, it's like highlights in here?
No, they were just, they were so minor. It was those three. It was just the sections there.
Yeah.
You just send them over, but I believe... Yeah, so 2.3F, alternate numbers of the commission may be designated to serve as a liaison. Alternate, so under D, alternate members who have not been so designated to act at a meeting may fully participate in the discussion of matters coming before the commission, including questioning the applicants and staff. Alternates who have not been so designated to act at a meeting, however, may not participate in deliberations, formally introduce or second any motion or vote on any matters coming before the commission. And that's just, you don't want somebody that's not participating in the vote to influence...
Pretty good about this.
Yeah, this commission doesn't have a problem with that stuff. But the other thing that you guys did discuss, which I included, is under 4.6, be time over german of all regular and special meetings shall be no later than 10:30 unless this rule is waived by unanimous vote.
That's been... I was wondering if, I think we touched on it once, do we need or should we consider language that allows us to vote a member off the island if they never go? You know, we've had people that have been elected or appointed and you see their nameplate and you never see them. And it just kind of goes on forever and they and they just vanish. But I don't think there's anything formal. Does that need to be in the bylaws?
I would just need to verify if you put it in the bylaws, if it would actually do anything. Because generally speaking, if you're appointed, the term starts and ends. And most towns have some type of language regarding attendance that says if you miss more than three consecutive meetings and another...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Where would that language be if not in the bylaws?
It's, in many cases, I think it's part of like the ordinance for the town. It applies to everything.
Okay.
In absent that here, I can certainly verify if that's something...
What do you think?
I don't have a problem with something like... You know what, if someone's having issues or whatever, they can't show up and it's legitimate.
Well, sure. We know about it. Ghosts, and you've never met them.
Yeah, that's...
I mean, it just sort of clogs it up because you think, well, you can't really...
Then you really have an opening.
Right, you got an opening that's not being... Well, if it is answered somewhere else, I might have a reason to reinvent something that's already in place. Just as long as we have something to rely on, so we say, hey, I make a motion that we no longer recognize this person as a commissioner because we've never seen them. Or they haven't showed up in a year and they haven't responded to our emails or anything. Something like that.
I agree, you know, if you're either elected or appointed to this commission, you should make an effort.
Absolutely, you gotta make or at least communicate if something's going down.
Communicate it.
Didn't we have a situation like that several years ago? We looked into it and it was like, if you miss seven consecutive meetings...
I'm remembering something.
That's, you know, something that the town has.
Okay, sorry. If it's out there, then we don't need to put it in the bylaws. Yeah, I don't know if you want to...
Ways to find out.
Yeah, I can find out. So I mean, if you...
I know one of the select.
It seems like they acted on that. We had that suspension a few years ago. Because there was someone that had never shown up for any meetings.
Right.
Yeah.
And it was either five or seven consecutive meetings without an excuse.
Without, yeah.
They could be removed.
Okay. I'll look into that.
Yeah, I can certainly verify.
Perfect.
Shouldn't be too hard.
All right, or anything further we need to do in the bylaws tonight? Mike said...
I'll follow up on that and get that.
Which brings us to the exciting election of officers.
Our bylaws say we have to have a full...
We don't have bylaws yet.
We don't have bylaws, you know? You got draft bylaws. Let's violate them now.
Well, that's in, that's why I went bylaws election.
Oh, that's right. Is that something we want to consider, though? Do we want more participants in the election process?
I would like to see more people.
Rebecca and Joe. Yeah, unless we must reach out to them and then ask them, hey, can you really come and burst it or be online? Because we want to elect officers. We want it to be a full.
And I think Rebecca emailed me. She has a family or something having their son. I don't know that Joe had the opportunity to get sworn in again, which is why, even though he's staying on, he needs to be sworn in. As of yesterday afternoon, he hadn't, so that's maybe... So we can reach out.
Maybe you can send an email to commissioners and say, hey, you know, our next meeting, if you need to elect officers, please make every opportunity.
Thank you. We can...
When is our next meeting? It's number 5.
As of now...
I am going to participate remotely in the meetings. I'll just sit down there. Yeah, I hate remote meetings, but I'll be there.
We, as of now, the agenda would include bylaws. If we wrap this up, we don't have anything else depending.
And the election of officers.
If we did that.
Sounds good.
We may have some other stuff. We may have some updates. Loves, you know, court stuff and whatever else. Not a lot moves in this time of year, but we might have something about that.
Okay. So we're going to put that on the next agenda. So it brings us to, for 2024 regular meeting dates. I don't know. I don't see any issues with October 6th. That's my birthday. I'll be in Texas, so I gotta do something exciting on my birthday.
What could be more fun?
Yeah. We'll see if I'm still chairing it by then, but maybe not.
Yeah, well, what's your role in port of finance? Just a member or you have...
Just a member.
You're not an officer yet or you're...
Yeah.
That's a budget season. That's pretty tough for you. That's your double trip on the line.
It'll be busy.
Reach out, you know?
Yeah.
So I think that July, it would have been the 2nd, which you're seeing there's only one meeting in July and August. August, we typically keep to one. The July meeting, it would normally be the 2nd, which is, I think, a tough week.
Yeah.
I'm usually on vacation the week of the 16th, but...
So...
Whatever.
Do you want to, we can add in the 2nd?
Nah, leave it. Leave it. We'll get through it.
And then I think this is the second year that you guys have only had one meeting in November because it coincides with the election date, so we kept that off. If you want to add in.
Then we need a special meeting somewhere there that will terminate. So we need to make a motion to approve, okay? I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting dates for PZC for 2024.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No unfinished business. Item G, approval of minutes for October 17, 2023. And really, are we good with the...
Yeah.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the minutes of October 17, 2023.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence, item 1, CR, CRG, Regulation Comment Letters.
So this is just the comment letters that come from... So this is uh, just the comment letters that come from CROG. It it essentially is just a list of. The. Towns within the CROG region and all their zoning amendments. So this is where we. We are required to refer out, which is why we have to push them back and then ours in here, so. This is the the correspondence for the regulation that you just approved. Finds no apparent conflict of regional plans. Um. So there's. A bunch of them, a a bunch of towns are doing the same amendments, the same.
Right, right, right.
So it's online, I can send it to anybody. Doesn't include the actual language, this is just the letter of them saying, we've done this review and we don't find there to be any conflict, but. Um.
How important is our physical participation in those circling?
So we did uh. Let them know that Jantin was going to be participating on behalf of the commission, but he, when I checked in with him last, had not actually been contacted.
Wow.
So I don't know if they were. Um, not. Meeting as frequently or it was just a, I'm I'm not sure, but.
I'd gone to a couple of them here.
No, that would be good.
And it just, they're, they're very boring and then I ran out of, you know, then I just didn't have the time.
You drive it all the way to Hartford, where, like West Hartford or something?
They're in Hartford, but I think they're similar now.
Yeah, are they all room now?
I believe. It, um, a lot of the initiatives, so we benefit greatly by being in the CROG region instead of the NICAG region.
Yeah, yeah.
But a lot of the initiatives and a lot of the plans and a lot of the things that you see CROG doing don't really apply. To us.
Right.
Um, but that big lots of grant that we got for River Road, like NICAG doesn't have that program. So that money, we would not have had access. The state provides it, but they dole it out to to the COGS and so NICAG gets a very small amount, they don't even have like a formal bid process, you know, sort of. Kind of just talk to the towns that they know and try to figure it out and it's maybe two or three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
So. I mean, that alone is a million dollar value just from being.
With paid part, yeah.
And we did submit other grant applications for different projects and things, we just. We just don't necessarily rank as. Well, as other towns, you don't have the population densities, the infrastructure.
It's diversity on the half, we still.
It's very depressing. Um, but the other ones, so the commissioner training opportunity, I included this, um. In case anybody was interested, um. It's coming up in on December first, um. So.
Hmm, I forgot that the the points are required. But there's. Is there any penalty for noncompliance? I think we talked about this.
There's no penalty. Um, it's all, it's basically self-reporting and there are things that are online, but you can basically just watch.
Okay.
Put on by Rich Roberts and and Ken Slater. Um. They're like YouTube recordings, basically you can speed them up, slow them down, pause them. Um, this one, there are some people that just want to do online, some people that want to do in person, so this one is um. Being put on by our agents, it's down there, so it's probably the last in person that'll be available.
Didn't we uncover this when we did that?
Surely.
I think so, but.
Yeah.
I also wasn't sure, well, I think. You know, this has been included, they sent it out because they know with the elections, a bunch of people are changing over and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, not meant. The last one was adjoining town, so just like for us, um, and as Kathy mentioned, Mansfield is doing the same thing. Um. They're doing their referrals. This is actually the language that I wrote too, because a lot of it is very similar. Their regs are set up differently, so they do have the specific. Uh. Our routes for adult daycare versus the the uh, the other three. So this is just letting you know. Um. And it's the same thing, they're taking out the requirement. And changing it to a zoning permit instead of a special use permit. Same idea, pulling out some of the. On their language and clarifying that it only needs to go through. Um. Same process. Their regulations are monumentally more complicated. But it's the same content.
All right, so that brings us to item I, public participation for items not listed on the agenda. Any? Any comments or questions from the public? Hey, you have staff reported discussion tonight?
Nothing beyond what we've gone over, no.
Brings us to item K. German, it's eight oh five PM, meeting adjourned.